Good evening, everyone. I'm going to call this meeting to order. It is the regular council meeting for June 26th and the time is 7:30. Clerk, can you please do a roll call?
Yes. Councilwoman Erin?
Here.
Mayor Portem Bliss?
I'm here.
Councilman Fleming?
Here.
Counselor Warbach?
Here.
Councilman Soltis?
Here.
Counselor Wright?
Here.
Mayor Grassley?
I'm here, thank you. First up this evening, Counselor Warbach is going to do the invocation and lead the pledge. Ask that you stand if you would like.
It is not our differences that divide us, it's our inability to recognize, accept, and celebrate those differences. But today during LGBTQ Pride Month and just a week after the celebration of Juneteenth and just before our celebration of Independence Day, I call my fellow residents of Madison Heights to embrace their neighbors, no matter who they are, who they love, how they identify, and remember the words of former President Barack Obama when he said, "When all Americans are treated as equal, no matter who they are or whom they love, we are all more free." May we all remember those words as we interact with one another, celebrate together, and uplift others in our community. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. First up, we have approval of the agenda. Are there any additions or deletions this evening?
Your Honor?
Yes.
I move that we add under Reports, number 11, the recommendation of special counsel to the agenda.
All right, thank you. Is there support?
Your Honor.
Yes.
Support.
Thank you. Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? All in favor of adding this to the agenda, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those against say no. Motion carries. Anything else to be added or deleted this evening? All right, moving on, we'll go to presentations. This is the 2023 Bike Rodeo Bicycle Winners. Chief Haynes?
Good evening, mayor and council. Thank you for allowing us this time to present a couple of bicycles this evening from our bike rodeo that occurred back on June 10th. What I want to do first is introduce Monique Harlan and Jackie Kettlewell from Michigan Schools and Government Credit Union. Every year, for the last several years, they have been gracious enough from the credit union to sponsor and actually purchase the bicycles for the kids that we give away. So if we could have a round of applause for them as they come up.
I'm Monique Harlan. I'm the Community Relations Specialist for Michigan Schools and Government Credit Union, and Madison Heights is one of the branches that I support. I'd like to take the opportunity to introduce our new branch sales manager, Jackie Kettlewell.
Thank you, everyone. Thank you for this opportunity this evening, and we're happy to resign on behalf of the Board of Directors and the Madison Heights Branch of Michigan Schools and Government Credit Union. Evan and Quinlin, they're new bikes. Congratulations.
All right, and also here tonight, we have Dan from the truck store in Royal Oak. So Dan, if you want to bring the first bike in for Quinlin, we'll do that presentation first.
Wear a helmet.
All right, and our second winner for the boys' bike is Evan Brook. And I know he's here tonight, but he is very shy and does not want to come out in front of everybody, so we will let him get away with that. But his beautiful blue bike is in the hallway, and we will present that to him out in the hallway, so. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Chief, and thank you to the credit union and to the bike store for getting this all set up for us. We really appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next up, meeting open to the public. This is the opportunity for the public to speak. I ask that you keep your comments to three minutes and address me, but you can speak on any topic. If you can give your name, address, and affiliation with the city, that would be great. With that, meeting's open to the public over at the podium.
Thank you, Your Honor. My name is Kevin Wright. I live at 745 Canterbury Drive, and I am the president of the Board of Directors of Madison Heights Citizens United. As I looked on the calendar toward tonight's city council meeting, I knew I ought to say a few words during the public comments about the Madison Heights Juneteenth Celebration to you, the council, and the residents, which took place over a little week ago on Saturday, June 17th, at Civic Center Park. But no matter what words I came up with, I always came back to the thoughts I posted on Citizens United's Facebook page immediately the day after the event on Sunday morning, Father's Day, June 18th. So with your indulgence, I'd like to read those words. As I sit here sipping my morning coffee on this Father's Day, I've had a chance to reflect on yesterday. Our Juneteenth Celebration was amazing. I'd like to thank the members of the MHCU Board of Directors for the hundreds of hours that they volunteered these past several months to organize such a spectacular event, our awesome team of volunteers who showed up bright and early and helped make sure everything ran smoothly throughout the day, and our sponsors, without whom we would not have been able to offer this festival free to our community. But I can't shake a particular feeling. While our first two celebrations in 2021 and 2022 were great, groundbreaking, historic, there was something different about yesterday. There was a palpable sense of community in the air. As I walked around the park, I saw people of all ages, races, and faith enjoying themselves, laughing, talking, sharing, coming together, and celebrating freedom. I saw children with big smiles, excited to see the animals at the petting zoo or bounce around in the bounce houses. I saw people who had brought their own tents and grills, enjoying the celebration on the lawn on such a beautiful afternoon. But perhaps what struck me most is seeing the people at our Juneteenth educational exhibit, taking their time to reach each board, some of them taking photos or videos of the information contained in the display. Yes, yesterday was something special in Madison Heights, a great celebration of a great American holiday in the city of progress. We're grateful to all who took part in it and look forward to using it as a foundation to an even better, more impactful celebration next year. Those are the words I wrote just a little over a week ago, and I'd just like to briefly follow up with those thoughts with just a few comments from some of the people who attended the celebration. A neighbor from Troy said, "So much fun. I had a wonderful time." Another neighbor from Detroit remarked, "I had a good time." A woman from Aitken, Madison Heights, said, "It was a beautiful celebration." And finally, another of our fellow Madison Heights neighbors said, "This was a spectacular event. I invited a friend from Sterling Heights, and he was impressed. I enjoyed myself. The crowd was great. Loving thy neighbor was in the air." And that's the final thought I want to leave everyone in the room and who are watching with tonight, loving thy neighbor was in the air. I'm proud of our Madison Heights community for embracing the Juneteenth Celebration and welcoming visitors from all over Metro Detroit to celebrate freedom with us on such a beautiful sunny afternoon in the park. Thank you again, Madam Mayor. We can't wait for next year.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak this evening?
Martha Colvert, 28609 Edward Avenue. Kevin, I agree with you wholeheartedly. It was a blast. It was a very nice event. Now, I have to bring up something. I messaged the mayor and got no response. I did message City Manager Marsh with an email and got a response. The pride picnic went on without a permit to cook. You guys, no one is above the law. I don't want to point fingers, but I want people to take responsibility for what they do. You knew you had to have a permit. You didn't. The county is the people telling us, "You have to have a permit to cook in the park." Not Madison Heights, the county. It's not a jailable offense, so people think it's no big deal. Well, but one ordinance being broken leads to another to another. It's not right. No one is above the law. Isn't that what everybody says? Nobody's above the law. Isn't this a law? So shouldn't we try to do what's right? So, and I'm not trying to, like I said, it's not a person, it's a legal thing to me. What I did for 27 years, this to me is a legal thing. So I think that the HREC that held the event should take responsibility. I don't, I don't want the county involved, but I think that if they then donate something to the animal shelter, you're showing they're taking responsibility and they're doing a justification so that people understand there's laws for a reason, there's ordinance for a reason. It's not just because people want to be spiteful, hateful, whatever. We can get along as a city, but we all have to be equal under the same law, correct? Isn't that what everyone says? Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak this evening? All right, seeing none, I'm going to close a public comment and move on to the consent agenda. This evening, there are three items. Got from the City Manager Amendment, one, the interlocal agreement with Oakland County Senior Matching Grant. We've got the special city council meeting minutes of June 12th and the regular city council meeting minutes of June 12th. What is the wish of council?
Your Honor?
Yes.
I move that we adopt the consent agenda.
All right, thank you. Is there a second?
Your Honor?
Yes.
Support.
Thank you. Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those against say no. Motion carries. And then we have reports. First up from the City Manager, the confirmation of appointment of Police Chief.
With the retirement of Deputy City Manager and Police Chief Cory Haynes, the police chief role will be vacant starting July the 1st. Therefore, the city solicited internal applications to fill this position. An oral interview was conducted by a panel, and it was the unanimous decision of the interview panel that Deputy Chief Brent Lemairez filled the role as Police Chief. So pursuant to Section 3.6 of the city charter, I respectfully request that city council confirm my appointment of Brent Lemairez to the position of Police Chief of the City of Madison Heights. This appointment will be effective July the 1st, and he will officially be sworn in on Thursday at 9 o'clock at the police station. And I know Brent is sad that he can't be here tonight, but he's actually jumping into this full force by going to the police chief's conference, and that's where he is today.
Thank you. What is the wish of council?
Your Honor?
Yes.
I move that council confirms the appointment of Brent Lemairez to the position of Police Chief of the City of Madison Heights effective July 1st.
All right, thank you. Is there support?
Your Honor?
Yes.
All support.
Thank you. Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those against say no. Motion carries. Next up, we have from the CED Director, the Microfish Digital Conversion Project.
The Community Development Department has approximately 30,000 files containing images of historic buildings, property records, and related documents. This year's budget includes $50,000 to convert this data from Microfish into a digital format to upload into the city's cloud-based database. We have an, the state of Michigan has an existing contract with the Madison Heights Business Graphic Sciences to conduct this project. However, their estimate is currently $64,231. Staff recommends that city council approve an agreement with the State of Michigan Department of Technology and Management and Budget, taking advantage of the existing State Services Agreement for Imaging Services, including uploading the data from Laserfish Cloud System not to exceed the $50,000 in the budget, as well as the annual storage cost for this additional data in the cloud system at an estimated $1,500 annually. Any leftover files needing digital conversion will be included in future department budget submittals.
All right, thank you. What is the wish of council?
Your Honor?
Mr. Bliss?
I move that we approve an agreement with the DTMB to take advantage of the State Services Agreement for uploading this data to the cloud with an amount not to exceed $50,000, as well as annual storage costs estimated at $1,500 annually.
All right, thank you. Is there a second?
Your Honor?
Yes.
Second.
Thank you. Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion?
Your Honor?
Yes.
Just that I'm excited that the Historical Commission would, after all this gets pushed up, this is going to be valuable stuff that we can start highlighting and showing off. I love all of the historic buildings and property records from back then. I think it's going to be very helpful, and right now, all of that is hard copy, and it may not last forever. So this is, I think, a great project. I'm excited we're doing it, and I think that the residents are going to see some value on that, too, wanting to know the house on the corner that's been there since, you know, the earlier 1900s. We have a couple of those in the city, and what are historic sites locally? I think that's important, so excited about this.
All right, thank you. Is there any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those against say no. Motion carries. Next up from the Finance Director, amendments to fiscal year 2022-23 budget and carryforwards to amend fiscal year 23-24.
So the state of Michigan's budget law requires that city council approve any budget amendments. Therefore, the budget amendments are submitted to ensure that the fiscal year '23 and the fiscal year '24 budgets comply with state law. If city council concurs with the recommended amendments, the council should approve the implementation of those amendments and appropriate the necessary funds, which will require a supermajority or five votes yes.
Thank you. What is the wish of council?
Your Honor?
Yes.
I would like to make a motion that the council approve the implementation of the amendments and appropriate the necessary funds with a required supermajority vote.
All right, thank you. Is there support?
Your Honor?
Yes.
Support.
Your motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion?
Your Honor?
Yes.
Perhaps for the sake of the public, staff could go through a few of the items on this. I know it's several pages in the packet, but just a high level of what some of those amendments and carryforwards would be that we're voting on.
I'll defer that to Linda Coonath, who joined us tonight.
We have a number of items. We go through the budget with department heads and take a look at what they, what projects they have done, what are yet to be done, as well as maybe something that is in the current year that we need to make sure that we get done before June 30. That would be more of the budget amendment. That would be for the current fiscal year. Anything that we have, that we haven't completed this year that we're going to print to next year would be considered a carryforward, and that's a budget amendment for fiscal year '24. So for the budget amendment item, we received a FEMA grant, so we're recognizing that revenue of $119,871, and we're looking to, for fire vehicles. We have a Quint that we are purchasing that was last meeting, and we were setting aside the funds for that. That's $150,000. So we have additional revenues that would equal to, so it's a balanced budget as well. The revenues are covering the expenditures. That's one of the examples of the budget amendments. We also have a gateway project signed, the design portion of it for the freeway is $5,000, and we're allocating funds for that as well. On the carryforward items, we had other projects that we are looking to get completed next fiscal year, which begins July 1st. So in the City Clerk's Department, there's an ordinance update and zoning rewrite that's happening, and we had a $4,500 amount that wasn't, we weren't able to finish this yet, but we know we're going to use it for next year. One of the larger amounts is the Police Department HVAC replacement. We're at phase one of three. We're carrying that over to next fiscal year. There's three fiscal years we plan on carrying and having budget, budgeting those funds to make sure we have enough to replace that. Were there any other questions on any other items?
Anyone else on the council have any questions or comments? No, all right, thank you very much. All right, seeing no further discussion, clerk, can you please do a roll call, and I'll remind everybody that we do need to have a supermajority of five.
Councilman Fleming?
Yes.
Counselor Warbach?
Yes.
Councilman Soltis?
Yes.
Counselor Wright?
Yes.
Councilwoman Erin?
Yes.
Mayor Portem Bliss?
Yes.
Mayor Grassley?
I vote yes. Motion carries. Thank you. All right, next up from the Police Chief, the School Resource Officer Agreement for the Lamphier District.
Lamphier Schools received grant funding to add a school resource officer to their school district during the 2023-24 school year. Therefore, staff has worked closely with Lamphier Schools administrators on this agreement that outlines the terms and conditions of this position, including the reimbursement at 60% of the cost plus 100% of the cost for any requested school-specific overtime for the upcoming school year. Staff and I recommend that city council approve this agreement with Lamphier Schools for a school resource officer for the 2023-24 school year.
All right, thank you. What is the wish of council?
Your Honor?
Yes.
I ask that council approve the agreement with Lamphier Schools for a school resource officer for the fiscal year 2023-24 school year.
All right, thank you. Is there a second?
Your Honor?
Yes.
Support.
Thank you. Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion?
Your Honor?
Yes.
I think this is the last time I'm going to get to ask Chief Haynes a question, so I'm certainly going to take advantage of that. Two things, is, I know you've been working at this for many years to be able to get this in place. Looks like a great agreement to me, but do we have the officer already hired and trained and ready to go, or is that a search that we're starting after we approve this tonight?
We have the officer selected. He goes to training in July, and he'll be ready to go in August when school starts.
Okay, awesome. And then, and on the off times when school isn't in session, whether it's summer break or breaks during the year, do they become patrol officers for us then?
Basically, at least with, as long as we have one officer, he's going to become more of a station support role and assist the department in anything that we need done during that time period so that he's not relegated to a specific shift because we're on 12-hour shifts, and, you know, we need to keep him available for, for the school and for other details.
Awesome. And my last question, what, what is the progress on doing the same thing for the Madison District?
So we started out with both school districts when we started the talks, and the only reason that we're going forward with the Lamphier School District at this time and not both is because Madison did not get a specific grant that they were looking for to pay for the service. So we're hoping that everything works out for next school year for Madison, and we'll have an officer start at that time in Madison.
Awesome. And then, sorry, I have one more, Your Honor. In the interim for Madison School District, are we boosting our community policing efforts with the school district?
Yes, we have officers going through the schools as much as possible, going to each and every one of the schools in the Madison District.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Your Honor? Chief, does anyone else have any questions?
Chief, is there specialized training for the school resource officer that's different from a regular patrol officer?
Yes, there is. There's actually state requirements, and they get trained by the state police. And so the person that we've selected is Officer Tim Hurst. He's been our youth officer on and off for several years, so he'll be going to some state, state-specific training in July to learn all the ins and the outs of working with the school district.
Thank you. Is there any other questions from council?
Your Honor?
Yeah.
Just on that point, I was teaching at one of the schools, and it was for alternative high schoolers that didn't graduate on time. And there was an incident that happened with a student, and he got called in, and I was a little weary about it, but he handled it perfectly. I mean, he totally deescalated what could have been into a problematic situation, so I'm all for it. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you.
I have a question for the chief. Is Tim Hurst, was he our youth officer?
Yes. That's correct. Yes.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? All right, seeing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those against say no. Motion carries. Next up from City Manager, the park renaming and interlocal agreement with the county for park operations.
So I have quite a few comments, but when I get finished with those, I'm going to turn it over because I have two representatives here from Oakland County Parks and Recreation. We have the director, Chris Ward, and a planner, Jess Watley. So, but before that, you have to listen to me read some comments. The interlocal agreement between the city of Madison Heights and Oakland County Parks and Recreation is establishing terms for future operations, maintenance, improvement, and management of the real property dedicated to the public recreation owned by the city, which will be incorporated into the Red Oaks County Park. This interlocal agreement before you tonight is the first official step in moving forward with the complete redevelopment of Ambassador Park. It will also redo the nature center agreement to eliminate the city's required $50,000 annual capital contribution. With the execution of this agreement, Oakland County Parks and Recreation Commission will assume the responsibility of Ambassador Park. They will continue the management of the nature center known as the George W. Suarez Friendship Woods, and we will transfer the grounds maintenance responsibilities to the city of Madison Heights at the youth soccer complex. Approval of this legal agreement is a necessary step for the implementation of this park improvement plan that you'll hear born about in a few minutes, and it's been authorized under the Healthy Communities Park and Outdoor Recreation Investment Plan, which was approved by the Oakland County Board of Commissioners back in October, which was the same time we approved our original letter of intent. This agreement will establish a 20-year term with a termination period for the, with a transition period for implementation ending concurrently with the county's fiscal year '23 fiscal year. The pre-existing lease between the parties for the management and operations of the nature center property will be superseded to establish a consistent lease for both properties. The new terms of the lease, the city will be eliminated from its cost-sharing responsibilities at the nature center. The city and the county also have a maintenance agreement with the youth soccer complex, where the city is currently responsible for the maintenance of the building and the financial obligation for the maintenance of the fields, which includes the irrigation, mowing, and snow removal. However, Oakland County actually physically performs those services. This agreement will release the county from physically performing those services, and the city will use our contractor that currently cuts grass in the other parks. Upon execution of this agreement by all parties, Oakland County Parks and Rec Commission will proceed with the planning, public engagement, and final design of the park improvement projects funded at Ambassador Park. Preliminary plans include the development of an innovation play and activity area designed to create active interactions between multiple generations, which really has been a focus of this new development. In addition, staff has had conversations with the Parks and Recreation Commission regarding the renaming of Ambassador Park. Originally, city council approved renaming Ambassador Park for Gary McGilvery. However, given the processes Oakland County has in place for naming the parks, they've suggested that we name a park feature instead. This really didn't seem to be the scale that the city council or the Historical Commission wanted to move, so Mark Bliss, who heads up the Historical Commission Naming Subcommittee, reached out to the McGilvery family, and they have agreed or suggested that we name 12 Sherry Park instead. So tonight, we are also asking to approve an amendment to the original naming motion and approve renaming 12 Sherry Park, McGilvery Park, on July the 17th of 2023. Therefore, I'm suggesting council make two motions after we hear from Oakland County Parks and Rec Commission. The first one is the approval of this interlocal agreement with Oakland County Parks and Recreation Commission regarding Ambassador Park, George W. Suarez Friendship Woods and Nature Center, and the Red Oaks Youth Soccer Complex. And the second motion would be to amend council motion CM 23-33 to rename 12 Sherry Park to McGilvery Park in honor of Gary McGilvery. And with that, I will turn it over to Chris and Jess from Oakland County Parks and Rec Commission.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council. Thank you for a few minutes of your time. I also want to thank Melissa for doing an outstanding job of summarizing our presentation, if it's okay with you. And as Melissa mentioned, this is Jess Watley, our principal planner on this project. If it's okay with you, we can just distribute some information out. And let me say first, I want to thank you for considering the actions you've taken to honor Gary McGilvery. Gary is just an outstanding public servant. He is an incredible advocate for this community for bringing more resources to South Oakland County. He's really passionate about serving and making the lives of people's, lives of people better, particularly seniors, children, and he's an incredible advocate for recreation. He's the chair of our Parks Commission, and we just really want to say thank you for the steps you're taking to honor Gary and hope there's, there's something we can do to help support that dedication event that's upcoming, and any resources we can bring, we'd be more than happy to do so. We have had an outstanding, longstanding relationship with the city of Madison Heights that has allowed us really to open the door to much improved services to the South Oakland County in the region and has allowed us to piece together and put together what is now Red Oaks County Park over many years. together what is now Red Oaks County Park over many years. We're excited by this opportunity to, to open a new chapter in that relationship and take this even farther, and the agreement that's before you tonight will provide us that opportunity to do so. I was going to go through some of the details, but the manager's done such an excellent job of, of going through them. I may offer her a part-time job to go to the rest of these city council meetings that we have planned.
She doesn't have time.
We'll say the last one we did was at the City of Pontiac, and we were about four and a half hours before we got to this step in the process of the.
She doesn't have time.
Hats off to the City of Madison Heights and how you, the council here does business. We also want to say thank you specifically to your manager, City Attorney as well, and DPW Director for all of the work that helped us get to this point today. It's been a long process and, you know, an evolving process, but I think we've landed on something that's a nice win-win for the city, for us, and really more than anyone else, the residents of the area, will benefit from improved recreational opportunities. We're particularly excited by this opportunity to bring Ambassador Park within the greater Red Oaks County Park area. We have planned an intergenerational activity area that I think will be the first of its kind in the county that's specifically designed to bring together people of all ages, particularly young people and, and older folks in the same space to recreate, have fun, and enjoy their time in the outdoors. I will turn it over to Jess now, if you, if you would just quickly go over the vision that we have and kind of the, the big ideas that we have.
Just so we're looking at the same thing. So, the front page is the park vision. So, you'll see pictures of examples, but basically, we want an area that's naturalized with a lot of natural elements. So, Ambassador Park is a seven-acre park, but we can really enhance that with different native species that we incorporate and different trees that we incorporate into the designs. Everything, we want to incorporate universal accessibility so that people, not only of all ages, but all abilities, can interact and engage with each other, which will increase, it has positive effects on mental health, physical health, and social health. So, a lot of looping pathways, that image in the top right is kind of our inspiration, so that anyone can look at the pathways and have variety. Every time that they go to Ambassador Park daily, they can have a variety in the ways they walk and can feel comfortable and confident in their, as they journey out without feeling like they might get stuck. So, incorporating natural elements, in the bottom right is the chess table, so those kind of elements that are built in that really foster engagement between different people. We are looking to add a green restroom, which for the users will look and feel like a flush restroom, and it can be completely self-sustaining. It doesn't have to be tied into septic or sewer, but it can be, so we're going to look into that. But there will be a restroom on site that will have a look and feel of a flush, full-use restroom. Yeah. And building a teaching pavilion at Red Oaks Nature Center. It's kind of our vision for the area. If you look at the second page, Ambassador Park is very long and skinny, so it's broken up into the north section and the south section. So, as you come in to the north section of 13 Mile, there's the parking lot, and then right off the parking lot, that is all universally accessible, different kind of sections of gathering for, that's where like the chess tables might be, some nature play elements, and some elements for intergenerational engagement will all be kind of incorporated in that area. There's some fitness equipment also adjacent to that area, so that people can come in and use the fitness equipment, but not be front and center on display. And then those looping pathways that we mentioned to just kind of give people variety and excitement in their journey. And then the south side of the park will be very enriched with a lot of natural elements, a lot of trees and plantings, and using some of that topography from the sledding hill incorporated into the design. So, and one last thing, there's a pavilion, a proposed pavilion at the, just south of where the current soccer field is, which would provide shelter or pavilion-type shelter things, but also could be like a stage amphitheater with open lawn seating, so people could gather on the lawn where the soccer field currently is, and there could be performances, or concerts, or other things of that nature is the proposal. So, these are concepts, very preliminary, but just ideas that we had based on our research that would be a good use of the space.
Thank you.
Yeah, so that's kind of the grand vision, but for the terms of the agreement, we'll be back again with a final plan. The first step in developing that plan will be some extensive public engagement with the residents of the area to, to get their thoughts and opinions on what their priorities and needs are for recreational opportunities to be developed in that park space there. But we have kind of a general vision there that seems to be workable for, for all parties as, you know, initial conversation. We had talked a little bit about pickleball. I think we may have another way to achieve that end that may be a little less potentially problematic for the closely located neighborhoods, residential area at Ambassador Park. So, with that, I think we've covered many of the bases. Be happy to take any questions that you might have, and really do appreciate your consideration of this item.
All right. Thank you. So, what is the wish of council?
Your Honor.
Your Honor, I move that council approves the interlocal agreement with Oakland County Parks and Rec Commission, allowing the changes to take place at Ambassador Park, George Suarez Friendship Woods and Nature Center, and the Red Oaks Youth Soccer Complex.
All right, thank you. Is there a second?
Your Honor.
Yes.
Support.
Thank you. Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion or questions from council?
Your Honor, is now a good time? I had a question for the gentleman up there.
So, Councilor Roebuck?
Oh, I'm sorry.
I made the motion.
No, go ahead. Okay. Councilwoman Erin, you've seconded. Did you have a question?
I did.
Okay.
Go ahead.
No, please.
And then Councilman Sultis will be next.
My question is, one, I just want to say thank you. When this was first brought to us, one of my biggest contentions was that it was not enough for our young and middle and older adults. So, to see the intergenerational activity park, I think that is going to be awesome. I am so excited. You know, I, I like the ideal of the chess and the ping pong, and just having families together at an actual park. My question is, I know that we're putting everything in for our older. What about our ADA equipment? Would the park have ADA equipment?
Yeah, absolutely. We're going to be designing this specifically for universal accessibility. Jess is, I might be able to address this a little better than I can, but I think the overall goal, absolutely the answer is yes.
And, and can we, when you do design it, is it possible that the ADA equipment can be close? Because some of our parks is so far away that if a parent were to come with both children, they can't be in both places at the same time.
Absolutely. We will take that feedback definitely under serious consideration as a priority. And as I said, we'll be back again with the final game plan for the park, and we'll be doing some public engagement. We'd appreciate any help you could give us in reaching more residents and, and getting us some feedback to make it the best possible plan we can.
I definitely would do that. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Sultis?
All right. So, mine's a little, I'm going to talk about the nature center real quick, since you're here.
Okay.
And I probably won't be too popular about it, but so, you know, you got a dog park, right? And that's a pretty large one. My son uses that, too. And so, I, I love the nature center and, and ride my bike through it every morning. What I'm asking is to consider not having dogs there.
Okay.
Because I can't tell you how many times I either scare them, or they scare me, or they come chasing after me, or they're barking. And so, I, I don't know any other nature center that has dogs allowed on it, but I, I just, I'm just kind of curious why there, why there is.
You're referencing the Friendship Woods area by the.
I'm sorry?
You're just, you're referencing the Friendship Woods.
Yeah, right.
Adjacent to the nature center.
And then it scares away all the animals and the deer.
It's good feedback. It's not something.
Like, because like Stony Creek, there's a nature center, and, you know, it says that there's no dogs allowed or animals whatsoever, so.
We'll definitely take that back and have some discussion about it.
Since there already is a dog park.
Sure. It's hugely popular. We're a trail area, certainly probably one of the most utilized in our entire park system. So, we'll definitely take that under advisement and see what we can do. Consider it.
Your Honor, I just have follow-up to that, because I know a lot of folks have dogs that really enjoy walking, and I think we already have a leash dog policy cracked in the, in the park, so with respect, I disagree. So, take it with a grain of salt.
Okay. Maybe we'll do half and half.
Right.
Perhaps, perhaps, I mean, this was really more about what is currently known as Ambassador Park, I guess, as staying as Ambassador Park, but maybe if we are doing the, is it in the fall, we're doing the public forums, perhaps we can have a couple of questions regarding the nature center, or comments regarding the nature center.
We welcome that.
Sultis wants to put some input on that. All right. Is there any other questions?
Yes, it's coming. Yep. When we talk about ADA compliant, one of my questions is, we built, we redid a bunch of parks here with their play equipment, but we have the flooring of the, of the park, of the play equipment is wood chips, and then it has an order around it. So, on, would you be upgrading the play equipment to be like a barrier-free, where it's like the floor of the, of the play equipment is more like a solid floor made out of like some type of absorbent material for falls and stuff like that?
No, I don't, I can't speak to that specifically. I think that has generally been our practice for the newer playgrounds that we've constructed. The older ones have the wood chips, but certainly barrier-free is our, our objective. Anything you want to add to that? Put you on the spot?
Sure, yeah. Just that ADA guidelines are really the bare minimum, unfortunately involved, which is our compliance, but our goal is to move forward with board in place wherever possible. That's like a rubberized, softer, softer surface, or they have some other options that are much more universally accessible. So, when we say universal access, we mean, I mean, we will always need ADA standards, but universal access means anybody can use it alongside anyone else without barriers. So, that's really our goal. So.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments?
Your Honor.
Yes.
Just, first off, clarifications for the public. This will not transfer ownership of the park to the county. It's transferring the operations of it to the county, but it's on a lease agreement similar to what we did with the nature center, or well, similar to what Gary McGilvery did with the nature center back in the day. And so, just confirming as well, Madison Heights residents will continue to enjoy free entrance. They're not going to have any parking fees, like what we did away with at the nature center, correct?
Thank you for clarifying that, Councilman. That's absolutely correct. The city will retain ownership. We will have a 20-year agreement that is renewable, and there are provisions in there that, you know, continue to have us consulting with the city regarding the use of the, the park and the improvements that will be made at the park.
I, I really appreciate the partnership. I think the amount of county parks in the city, I mean, my daughter and her friend were just at the, the water park enjoying the water slides this weekend, before the rainstorm, obviously. But, yeah, very much appreciate the partnership. The only thing that I would like to see, and I will just throw this out there for the record, it's not an immediate solving type of thing, but Suarez Friendship Woods, I would, I'd like that to be a little bit bigger on the sign. You know, it seems to be kind of lost in the shuffle, and, yeah, I could be mistaken, but he's still our longest-serving mayor in the City of Madison Heights, along with a, a past former county commissioner, so I'd, I'd like to make sure that that's prevalent on the sign. And if you, if the county would be willing to work with our Historical Commission on that, I would greatly appreciate it.
Absolutely. I was, you know, one of the concerns with incorporating Ambassador Park, if that was the renaming plan, was there has been, you know, it's gotten a little lost, I think, you know, and it's important to recognize former Commissioner and Mayor Suarez's contributions, and as much as it is, you know, that we're happy that we're honoring former mayor and, and our current county commissioner, Gary McGilvery.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions from council?
I have a, just a question, or maybe a ask, just that for the residents that surround that park, that you guys, that we make a good effort to reach out to them and make sure that they have some feedback and are communicated to, so it doesn't seem like a surprise, the changes that are coming to that park.
Absolutely. We want to make this welcomed as much as possible and be a very positive thing for the city, for the residents, and the county, all in, all concerned. So, we'll take that to heart and do everything we can.
Any other questions, comments from council? All right. I have one question, I guess, and that is regarding the ADA equipment. Are these, is it going to be something where the entire park, maybe not the start, but eventually, is going to be ADA compliant? Or is there still going to be segregation?
Yeah, well, you know, I really say that this is kind of a vision at this point.
Sure.
And the, putting, the final plan will be something that is going to take quite a bit more work, which is design, and working with, you know, our, our folks that put together construction documents and, but the public engagement part of it is very important as well. You know, I, I don't know if we could speak to that at this point, or, or not.
Sounds like it's too early.
It is a little early, yes, but we're hearing all the priorities from the council tonight, and you as well, Mayor, and we'll do our very best to incorporate as many of them as possible, except when you disagree with each other.
All right. All right, thank you. Okay, so, thank you for that. So, what is, okay, so, discussion is over. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those against say no. Motion carries. And then, last up, we have number 11, which was.
Your Honor.
Second part.
Oh, sorry, second part. That was, it went on so long. Okay. What is the wish of council for the second part?
Your Honor.
Yes.
I move that we amend Motion CM 23-33 to rename 12 Sherry Park to McGilvery Park in honor of Gary McGilvery.
All right, thank you. Is there support?
Your Honor.
Yes.
I'll support.
Thank you. Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion?
Yes, Your Honor. I'm really sad that it didn't work out with all of the additional changes that we're putting into Ambassador Park, though I understand the county's position, and by taking over operations, it does make it a little bit more challenging, and we want to make sure that we are aligning with their protocols. And so, I reached out to the McGilvery family and had, had a discussion with his kids, and the cool thing, I think, about 12 Sherry, now, I hate to take away that really great park name. That's incredibly well-thought-out and not literal in any way, shape, or form, but this, Gary's grandchild lives in the city off of 12 Mile, and so, this will be great for them to be able to, to visit, you know, Papa's Park, as I hear that it's being called. And so, I think this is a, a really, really good alternative for us versus Ambassador Park.
Thank you. Is there any other discussion? Okay, seeing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those against say no. Motion carries. And then, next up, we have report number 11 that was added, and that is the recommendation of special legal counsel. What is the wish of council?
Your Honor.
Yes.
I move that we adopt the recommendation of legal counsel from our special council meeting earlier this evening.
Thank you. Is there support?
Your Honor.
Yes.
I'll support.
Thank you. Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those against say no.
No.
All right, thank you. Motion carries 6-1. And that is it for our regular council meeting, so I invite closing comments, starting with Councilwoman Erin.
Thank you, Your Honor. First, congratulations to our bike rodeo winners, and I wish that little Evan was still in here, because I would have told him we would have closed our eyes as he got on his bike, but, you know. Secondly, again, Kevin Wright, Juneteenth, was an incredible, well-organized event. I don't know how many of you know, but my son has developed a clothing line, and he sells shirts, and when we pulled up for the event as a vendor, we were greeted by the traffic control, they helped unload the car, they set up the tent. By the time I drove from one side and parked the car, the tent was up and tables were down. I'm like, wow. So, it was a great crew. There were people from all over. Pontiac, I, there was a lady I met that even came from Ohio to come to this event, you know, so it was well, you know, attended. So, kudos to you. The fireworks last night, although the rain stopped my show, because I had a great show for you all, you just don't know. So, I got to figure out how I'm going to put my show on, but no, the fireworks were really great. Me and my son, we sat in the car with the dog, and I hear a lot of people say their dogs do not like fireworks because of the noise, but Snowball sat in that car and looked out the sunroof and was enjoying the fireworks. I don't know what kind of dog he is, but he loves the fireworks. So, it was a great show. So kudos to Brooke. You know, I know that was a lot of stress put on her last night. People were probably asking her thousands and thousands of questions regarding when is the rain going to stop? What are we going to do? What, you know, let's put the tables up. Jordan was concerned that I wasn't going to show up and he was like, Mom, you still got to come. And I'm like, but my hair. But it was, it was a really nice event and I was glad to see people attend although they stayed in their cars. Another thing, Red Oaks Water Park is open, is the hours are a little shorter than normal, but if you guys can, you know, anybody that's out there, it's a great park for, you know, to spend time with your kids, get them out of your house for a little bit, but go there. Last, Chief Haynes, I'm going to miss you. It has been an incredible couple of years of knowing you. You guys always hear me talk about Jordan, it's like that's all I got to talk about, but I do have more in life. But, you know, when my son attended his first coalition meeting, he came home and I think I told it, he, he was impressed that he met council members, but he said, Ma, I know the chief of police. You know? And when he, even when he seen you last night, I, I mean, I had my glass, he was like, there goes Chief Haynes, there goes Chief Haynes. So my son, and it's really a proud thing because in this day and times, for a young African-American kid or black child, because I don't like that word, to be impressed with the police, that means you're doing a dang good job. So thank you, sir, for the great job. And that's all I have.
All right, thank you. Mr. List?
Yes, Your Honor. Yeah, Juneteenth was a phenomenal festival. My family and I had a great time, but I don't think it's hard for a reason for somebody to leave Ohio to come to Michigan. I'm just glad that we were a stop along their journey. But no, I, I really loved the event and I think it's a pretty special event, all run by, by an outside nonprofit. I think it's a, I don't know, I think a phenomenal testament that volunteers were able to put that on. It's difficult to do. Those types of things don't just happen. And so when Mr. Wright said the hundreds of hours of volunteers, I think you probably underestimated that because that also doesn't account all of the planning and the, the date nights that you and your wife probably spent talking about the festival instead of life in general. So thank you, I appreciate your efforts and if one person can enjoy that coming from Ohio, I think you've done your job. And a couple of other things, Chief Haynes, you're not going anywhere other than just you won't be here working. I will see you around, I'm sure, a lot, but it has been both an honor and a privilege and I am so thankful that you have been the chief the entirety of my council time. And I mean, I think I, you, you've been, you've been around quite some time and I think, I think you might have been the canine officer when I was in school still, so. I say that, I say that not to, not to make, not to make either of us feel ridiculously old right now, but I, I say that to say you have been in a Madison Heights institution for so long, I can't even remember. And I think that you're, you are greatly appreciated, you will be incredibly missed and we are very thankful for the time that you invested into making the city as safe as it can possibly be. So thank you, sir. And finally, tonight before the meeting, we dedicated the pavilion at Monroe Park to former Councilman Bob Gettings. There was actually a pretty significant turnout in the middle of a rainstorm to be able to honor Bob Gettings and so very thankful for that. Signs are going to go up in the next couple of weeks. I'd encourage anybody to come out, check out that park. It's a beautiful park, beautiful pavilion and there are great signs that tell the story of what Councilman Gettings has done for the community. So that's it, Your Honor.
All right, thank you. Mr. Wright?
Thank you for that. Yeah, that was a great ceremony. I enjoyed it myself. That was fantastic. I want to start off by giving more kudos to Kevin and to Kalila and to the Madison Heights Citizens United, to the whole board. There was one point where I pulled Kevin aside and I just talked to him because I remember when it was partnered with HREC, Human Relations and Equity Commission, and I remember, I don't have recency bias, I remember the struggles we had and it was, it wasn't always fun and it's still not always fun as I'm sure he pulled Kevin aside, he'll tell you, but mission accomplished. Like, there was a point where I stood around and people were just enjoying themselves. People were enjoying the culture, they were enjoying the food, they were just enjoying the atmosphere and that was the goal. And so I pulled Kevin aside and I said, hey, congratulations, this is what we first sat down, we talked about and you got it done. So kudos to Madison Heights Citizens United and, you know, kudos to our community for being an example to like the state, to like the country as to how to do it right. And so I look forward to us just continuing to do this and for it to be even better. So also thank you to the Oakland Community Health Network for coming out. We added them at the last minute and they had a table and they had resources and so that was a fantastic addition to the event. I want to congratulate Quinlan because as someone named Quinn, you don't meet too many other folks who have a similar name, so congratulations to her and Evans on winning their bikes. I know that's like a, that's a big deal when you're a kid, guys, that's huge. So to shift it back to the Human Relations and Equity Commission for just one second, in the month of July and August, we are going to be taking a bus tour. And so there's a lot of cool places where culture intersects in this area in Metro Detroit and so we're going to partner with the Jewish Historical Society of Michigan to have two sessions and a bus tour to kind of check out some of those intersections of Jewish culture, black culture and Detroit culture in the area. So I encourage everyone to check it out on 19th to 26th. This is a, I know a project, so I know Melissa and I had talked about it and I know Sean had checked into it as well and so it should be interesting to see how this all comes together. There'll be more details that come very shortly, so keep an eye out online for that. Other than that, I just want to say Happy Independence Day and before I forget, I have to tell the short-winded story of my interaction with Chief Haynes. So when I first met Chief Haynes, prior to having any involvement with government at all, there was a young man named Michael Brown who had lost his life and it touched my heart because I had, saw myself in that young man. And so I reached out to Chief Haynes at the time as a resident and I just introduced myself and I said, hey, you don't know me, I don't know you, but I would like to talk to you. He responded to my email, he talked to me and he said, call me Cory, which I could not do at the time because he's the chief of police. I couldn't just call him Cory, but what I always appreciated was in that moment, how he made me feel like he was ready to listen and, you know, well, I know we didn't always agree, but the fact that I didn't have to have a title, I wasn't Councilman Quinn, I wasn't, you know, a potential candidate Quinn, I was just a resident and he listened to me. That meant the world to me and so I appreciate that and I appreciate your service to our city. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Sherman, anything tonight?
Thank you, Your Honor. Very briefly, it goes without saying that the city attorney's office works very closely with the Madison Heights Police Department and it's been our distinct honor, I'm speaking on behalf of my, all the members of my firm, Larry, Tim and me and our, and our staff. It's been our distinct honor and pleasure to work with Chief Haynes. We've worked very closely over the years and I wish him the best in his future endeavors.
Thank you. Mrs. Marsh?
As I say here tonight, I think it's becoming real that this is Cory's last council meeting. It's kind of, I've been in denial, I think, that it really is happening, but it really wasn't. But I want to thank him. He's had a very large impact on the community as a whole and the residents and especially the employees here. He's been my deputy city manager the whole time I've been the city manager, so it's definitely going to be a change, but I'm sure his impact will be, continue to be felt throughout the city and maybe now, as long as he doesn't call us up yelling at us as a resident, we hope to stay in contact. I want to thank the Recreation Department and the DPS and the Police Department for toughing it out through the fireworks last night. We got a lot of feedback and I just, you know, probably doesn't do me any good to clarify, but I did want to clarify, one of the reasons we didn't call it like a lot of other communities did is because there's no refund and there's no rain dates. There were a lot of comments of it's so easy to reschedule. It's not so easy to reschedule. These aren't city employees on the hill shooting off fireworks. This is a professional company. They do a fabulous job and they have 60 shows scheduled from last night until the 4th of July. So it's not like you can say, oops, we want you to come on Tuesday. Instead, they already have all those slots dated and to get on the schedule for a rain date costs almost $10,000. So we try to be very responsible with money. We, I mean, we are very responsible with money, I think, and we were not going to get a refund had we canceled, so we wanted to provide the community something for that money and they said they could do it in the rain and we were very aware of people's safety. I think the Police Department and the Reserve Officers, who he's here again tonight, he was here all last night, did a fantastic job clearing the park. We opened City Hall and had people in the basement and I think that we did a good job with that and the fireworks ended up being fantastic. Yes, you had to watch them from your car, but at least you still got to watch something. So I'm very proud of that and I'm very proud that the, the staff was very proactive early on in the day, from like noon all the way until the fireworks happened, we were all in contact. So it's not that we just did that mindlessly and said, oh, staff's put work into this, let's just continue to happen, which is the way people kind of took the comment, but that's not how it was. I'm also very happy to have done the Bob Gettings dedication earlier today. It makes me very pleased to be able to honor these people, but one of the things I say to Mark all the time is I really want to honor the people while they're still alive. I think there's really value in that and so along, most of you heard tonight about the Gary McGilvery Park, that's going to rename 12 and Sherry. That is going to happen on July the 17th at 5:30, so that's three Mondays from now, I think. So if you can join us at 12 and Sherry, we hope to have a nice celebration there partnering with Oakland County for that. So that's it for me.
All right, thank you. Anything from the clerk's office today?
I too, just want to echo the comments of everybody up here about Chief Haynes. I appreciate your being my, a great colleague as well as a great mentor and I'm going to really miss you and I always sat next to Chief Haynes at our staff meetings, so now, now I don't know who I'm going to lean on, so thank you very much and I know I have some big shoes to fill as far as being the deputy city manager.
Thank you. Ms. Wilton?
Chief Haynes, thank you for all your, all your service and we appreciate you, so that is, it's a job I'd never want to do. So I'm glad that somebody of your caliber wants to do it and has been doing it in the city for so long, so thank you. I wanted to also mention, you know, you guys all talked about Juneteenth, it was amazing, yes, 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 it was amazing. I got a back massage and I was like, proposed to the woman that gave me a back massage afterwards, it was great. There was just, it was just, like you said, just like this wonderful feeling and that feeling continued on Sunday when I went, the citywide garage sale. I don't know about y'all's neighborhood, but there were people everywhere, walking around the neighborhood, talking to each other, just like, there were, there were, I have never seen so many people out and about with wagons full of junk that they were like taking from other people's houses. It was, it was almost like a party in the, in the neighborhood on the day after and it just felt like this extension of community that I, I really loved. I think it passed years, like, past couple of years, the rain has kind of gotten in the way, but it was a perfect day for both Juneteenth and the citywide garage sale. So thank you for everybody who put those together and made that happen because I really enjoyed it. Yes, festival and park, all the things, all the wonderful things, so ditto. But the thing I do want to talk about now is the, starting July 1st, I believe, in the library, you're going to see some beautiful art created by folks with disabilities throughout Michigan. They submitted hundreds of pieces of art that we did a call for artists and the committee searched through them and approved which ones and those are going to be started to display in the library soon. And then on the 22nd, there's going to be reception and a community art project. We're going to invite everybody to come out and participate in creating a beautiful mural that is then going to live in the library permanently and it's going to be really cool. So keep your ears out, keep your eyes out on social media. This really beautiful project that's going to be a collaboration of the Arts Board, of the HREC and the statewide, the Michigan Statewide Independent Living Council. We're celebrating the Americans with Disabilities Act Pride Month. It's July the 26th is the, the day that that was first passed back in the 80s and so this is the, the month that a lot of folks with disabilities kind of celebrate like that, yeah, we're here and we deserve to be part of your community. And, and so, you know, I appreciated everybody's comments and concern about that our, you know, the ADA accessibility of our parks and that is such an important piece of who we are as a community in Madison Heights. And I know that it is an important touchstone for us, like whenever we're looking at how we, how we implement things here, so I appreciate that. And I think that it is exciting because we are, that they had started out with Traverse City and Madison Heights were going to be the two communities that did this big community art project. Traverse City couldn't get their act together and so they canceled it and we're the only one in the state that's doing it with the statewide independent living council. It's a real testament to our ability to get that kind of stuff done and, and bring people into our community and I think it really is an important, important thing that we're going to be doing. So please come out and support that. Thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Fleming?
I want to say that I'm really happy about the Juneteenth event. It is getting bigger and bigger every single year and I appreciate all the work that the, the Rites are doing on that and I had a really great time there. Food was great. I think it even was extended and it was so big that the entire parking lot of Landfair was, it was jam-packed. I mean, it was people just parking almost anywhere in the parking lot, so you could tell that it was, it's getting huge. And I also want to say congratulations to Chief Haynes and good luck on his retirement. I know that he's still going to be around. He's also still helping the Crime Commission on, on the canine demonstration, demonstration that's going to be on September the 9th, so would look for him to be there. And finally, I'm going to be having some office hours that's going to continue on tomorrow and 10 o'clock in the morning at the library until noon, so you can come there and talk to me at the library. And you can also reach me on email at SeanFleming@MadisonHeights.org. That's it.
Thank you. Ms. Soltes?
Cory, I'm going to talk about the same thing I said last week, probably add some things, but yeah, I'm, I'm very happy for you. I know you're going to do a fantastic job wherever you go, but I'm going to miss you. You're a good friend. We, Cory and I, we were basketball coaches for two years in a row and, you know, we hung out and everything and so also my, my proudest moment is when we came together, you and I, and we, we brainstormed on how to get that SIU. We met with the FBI Director Troy, the chief over there and then I think it was somebody else. And so, and then it, and it came together and, and we did, we did a fantastic job implementing it. We saved lots of people and we, and we did the hotels where we called them and said, listen, you got to, you got to get in here and take care of business and they did. And then the trip to Lansing was, was so much fun and so we had about, what, 60, 60 or 70 seniors and we're trying to corral them all and Chief was over there doing one side, I was on the other side. And the bus, the bus lady who drove, worked for DPS, I can't think of her name. Do you remember her name?
Linda.
Linda. And she was, she was happy to drive and she was happy to help out. It was a fantastic experience, but anyhow, we'll miss you and, and, but, you know, we'll still keep in touch. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, so I'm going to start with Chief Haynes and I'll tell my story and that was, I think he was deputy still and I, I was a mom at an elementary school and we were all frustrated with the parking lots, which I think is still a situation, but we were all frustrated with the parking lots. And I could, just called the police department and I said, who can I talk to about getting someone here? And Cory Haynes got on the phone and said, oh, I can do that, just have the school call me. And I was, I was all in a huff and I was like, I'm working it. That's it. And he's like, yeah. And I was like, are you kidding me? And that was it. And I told the principal and she's like, that's it. And two days later maybe, we had someone and I think he's still there. So that was great. That was great. You know, he, he knew what to do and so appreciated that and of course, over the years, there have been any other, other times that Chief Haynes has come to the rescue. So thank you, Cory, and I wish you luck in your future endeavors. I also went to Juneteenth, I'm not going to belabor it, it was great, Kevin, good job. We expect to have twice as many people next year. I, I did think it was very interesting though that there were three tables that were focusing on mental health and I think that really says...
on mental health, and I think that really says a lot about the need for there to be more conversations, and definitely to have more, more help. But because of Juneteenth and because of Trail Tunes, I have been getting interest from outside of the city for hosting concerts in the city. You know, I was at your Juneteenth, I'm thinking, I want to do something, what can I do? So there is absolutely nothing concrete right now, but I do have a few people who are interested in doing something, and I'm open to all conversations, because when we have these events, it brings people to the city. It really does help out, and it's not something that the city's paying for. So, you know, if anyone does know of someone who wants to do something, you know, I'm open to all conversations, and if we can come up with something in concrete, that would be great. Last night, the fireworks, the rain actually did stop, what, about 10 to 10, quarter to 10? So I usually bike over, but yesterday that wasn't happening. But we drove over, planning on sitting in the car, and we, like a lot of other people, got out of the cars and were walking around, so it was great. And yes, there were a ton of police and reserves there, so thank you for being there. It was very much appreciated. Thank you to everyone who came out before council for the pavilion naming for Bob Gettings. I think that was really important. Unfortunately, we had rained for that, and as soon as we finished, it stopped. Once again, we can't control the weather, but I do appreciate it, and it was nice seeing, there were people that I hadn't seen in a few years, you know, staff that had, had moved on. The, the microfishing that we approved today, I think is really important, and Mr. Bliss touched on this, the historical documents. It's really important that we remember our histories, and that we remember the histories of other people. You know, before, there was a written word, before so many people were literate, everything was passed down by telling stories. And when one generation was no longer, if they hadn't told the stories, then the stories were gone. And now, we have these historical documents. My grandfather was a writer, and I have been blessed to have some of the writings that he wrote 80 years ago, and it was, this was a man who had fled from Poland, who had fled the Nazis, and he had lost family to the Nazis, and his thoughts, and, and it's very interesting to see, and it's also very sad to see, because there are things that he talks about where I think, wow, 80 years, and those things are still going on. So I'm quite interested to see what happens with this historical tour, because I think it's really important that people understand what, what's going on with our history. And then finally, Mrs. Covert touched on a grilling situation, and I would just like a little bit more information from the city manager on what that was, and it doesn't necessarily need to be tonight, but I've had a few people from the public reach out, and just for reference for our residents, there are a lot of things that we get told at different times that we can't necessarily share. So when I don't answer you, or I tell you I don't know, it's quite possible I don't know, and I don't have an answer, but it's also quite possible that I do have an answer that I can't share. And in this situation, I didn't really know what was going on, but because it's potentially a legal situation that she was referring to, I do want to make sure that nothing is going on that could put us on the hook, make us legally responsible for something. So that is a request that I'm going to make, just to make sure that this isn't something where down the road, it can come back at us, because I hope I speak for everyone when I say first and foremost, our, our job is to put the best interests of our residents front and center, and keep us out of any legal predicaments. Having said that, the next meeting will be July 10th. Our time is now 8:45, and this is adjourned. Thank you. Good night.[1765.71][1765.71]